Notice it's hereby given of a Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 3rd, 2019, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call this meeting to order and invite our city manager, Rod Kabiri, to come up and do the invocation. Please stand or remain standing, and Ambassador Girl Scouts Emily Hernandez and Catherine Lammack will do the pledges after the invocation.
Please bow with me. Father God, we pray you watch over this evening's meeting. We pray, Father, that you instill peace, wisdom, and understanding amongst the leaders before us. We pray, Father, that you watch over Friendswood and bless the actions of this council. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation.
Under God.
One.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible. Communication from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Couple cards here. Kathy Rogers?
While you're coming up, I will be holding the card up. You have three minutes, and after two minutes, I'll give you a one-minute warning. That means time, so.
Hi, Kathy Rogers. Really, I came from patronizing a Friendswood business. It was the yoga studio, so that's why I look like this. But I just, I wanted to talk about the naming policy for Agenda Item 12. There was talk about naming the gazebo, and I think usually there's a committee and there's a process for carrying out the naming. And so, you know, no offense to Mr. Schrader, who I don't know at all, but I might offer other suggestions for naming, but I just, I would like the city to have, I think they have a naming policy, and I would like them to use the naming policy. And if there are those among you that don't like the naming policy, then let's change it and then name things, rather than name things after people without a policy and, you know, then mess around with it or just ignore that we have a policy at all. I think that is a bad precedent to not follow the policies that we have. So I respectfully request that you look into the naming policy and defer this agenda item to a later date. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Cushing.
Same procedures.
Thank you. Could I speak later after executive session? Is that okay? Could I speak at a later time during the public comment later?
Sure. You can speak as many times as you want during our public comment periods. We have one now, we have one before we go into executive session, and we have one when we come back at 7:00.
7:00 would be great.
Item 5, multi-year financial plan. General Hampton.
Good evening, mayor and council and citizens. Thank you for being here tonight. Tonight, we're going to cover in the work session the multi-year financial plan, which covers the next five-year planning window for the city from fiscal years 2020 through The goals of this evening's work session are to provide a very high-level overview of the multi-year financial plan, to also remind you that our multi-year financial plan includes or is limited to the general fund and the debt service funds only. We'll take a look at our utility funds as well as the special revenue funds and our, the other fund, the other city funds during our budget process. We'll also look at critical assumptions and planning assumptions included in the plan. We'll also, our ultimate goal is to generate dialogue between council and staff and to get direction from you all on how we can best maintain the city's current services. As mentioned, the scope of detail for our multi-year financial plan, we look at revenue projections, we look at expenditure projections, we also take a look at our first run or first look at the decision packages that are estimated by our city departments as to what our needs are for operations and maintaining our current service levels. We'll also, also as a reminder, that year one of our multi-year financial plan is actually the basis or the beginning of our upcoming budget development process. We also take a look at our fund balance projections for the next five years, and we'll get into that detail as we go through the presentation. Our key revenue planning assumptions that we look at in the multi-year financial plan, this, in our five-year planning window, we have property values are looked at because a large portion of our proposed budget and the multi-year financial plan are based on our property tax revenues. That is our main revenue source for the city. So we have estimated growth in the plan of about 2% year-over-year throughout the plan, and that's for property valuation, revaluations, as well as looking at new growth in the plan. Our other revenue sources, which include our sales tax revenue, our franchise fees, as well as our parks and recreation fees, are based on our population estimates of about 2%. So those are growing throughout the plan at that rate. The revenue planning data that we look at, as I mentioned, revenue, residential and commercial growth are projected in the plan. We look at our new home starts. We have about 200 new homes coming in, or we're estimating about 200 new homes annually, year-over-year, in the plan. We're also looking at the value of that growing, of those new homes growing by about 3% year-over-year. So in year one of the plan, we're estimating our new home values to be around $478,000, and we are expecting that to grow over the next five years to around $538,000. We are also looking at commercial growth in the multi-year financial plan. Over the next two years, we have around $50 million in new commercial growth that we expect to hit our property tax rolls over the next, the next few years, and that will grow throughout the plan. We take a look at it really in those first couple of years, because when we get beyond that, it's a little hard to project what new businesses may come into the city. So other considerations in the plan, we start looking at our fiscal policies. We review those annually. We also begin our revenue projections and take a look at those going forward. We also look at fee adjustments, if we need to adjust any fees or if we need to implement any new fees to cover city operational expenses. The plan is also designed so that we can incorporate or include any alternative revenue sources. And I just want to say, as I'm going through the presentation, if you have questions, please feel free to stop me at any time.
I do have a question. You're estimating the 2% growth. What was it actually in values?
In 2% on our values, we're actually looking at next year, our appraised value to be around 4.6 million. This year was around 4.3, 4.4.
Percentage-wise?
Percentage-wise, around 4.7%.
Okay.
Can I tag onto that question? It seems to me that the last several years, we've seen much higher than 2%. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what do you attribute to the slowing down of it?
We actually look at the revaluations of properties. So when we say the average of 2.2%, looking at that some of the properties may reduce in value, some will go up, also the new construction. So just, it's a conservative estimate.
And have you ever, do you ever look back, because you make these projections each year? Do you ever go back and say, okay, so last year, or the year before, year before that, we made these projections, and then how close do we actually come? Do you actually do that?
We look at that each year as we develop the budget, as we go in and we get closer. Once we get certified values, we always go back and we look at the year-over-year.
And do you have a graphic or something that shows how accurate we've been?
I don't have that with me tonight, but in your budget, in the budget document.
Just bring it in the budget process.
In our, in our budget document, we do have a table that shows our net taxable value and the growth of that from year-over-year, and it's a, I believe, 10 or 12-years historical look.
Yeah, and I know, and I've seen the actuals, but I'd be interested in your projections versus actuals.
Okay.
In other words, you know, we're, you're asking us, and you know, and we're taking it face value, you know, hey, we think it'll be 2%, but it seems like we haven't hit that all that close, and I'd just like to see. So if you go back, say, four years, and you say, these are what we projected every year, and this is what actually happened, I'd be interested, just, just so we can understand the projection, that's all.
Yes.
And then in the next meeting, or the next time we do, is fine.
And I actually did that projection. We, we've gotten our preliminary values from Galveston appraisal, Galveston Central Appraisal District, and I just did that projection for the city manager just this last week, over last year. I didn't go back historically. So I'll do that for the next meeting.
And just for clarification, Councilmember Rocky, you're looking for the valuation growth or actually the revenue growth?
Every year, you guys come in with a projection.
Correct.
2% over the next five years, et cetera. Which is great. I'd be interested in if you went back five or 10 years and you say, these are, every year, these are our projections, and then this is what it actually came out as. I'd just like to see how close we come.
We're looking at projected.
Does that make sense?
Just value, not revenue.
Projected value over our actual.
Well, I would like to see the revenue, actual revenue growth. Because those values are one thing, but once you subtract all the things you have to subtract from, I'd like to see if that revenue growth is actually more than 2% or not.
Okay. And that's why I ask, is with the adoption of the effective tax rate in previous years, and also lowering the tax rate with the last five years, that that's fluctuated. But we can give both.
And I would just like to state that I appreciate the fact that the city uses conservative numbers. Right?
I do, too.
So I would, I would rather us come out and project 2% and base our budget off 2% growth, and come out and try to hit the nail on the head and say, we're going to be at 4.78 this year, and we come in at 3.5, and it's like, oh, my goodness, we're in trouble. So 2% may not be the number, but I'm certainly appreciative of the fact that year-on-year, we typically go around 2%, 2.5% in increasing in spending, and that's what has allowed us to keep our tax rate close to the effective tax rate. So I'm thankful for that. I do think it's important to see the data. I'm not disputing that. I think that's relevant as well. But again, I'm very thankful that you guys project very conservatively.
Thank you.
I know that would surprise some in the audience, but.
In the multi-year financial plan, we do look at the estimation. As I said, the first year of the plan is actually the basis for our proposed budget. So in year one of the plan, in the general fund, we're estimating our revenues to hit the $30 million mark for this coming fiscal year. Looking at the breakdown of our general fund revenues, about 52% of that comes from property taxes. So a little over half is our property tax revenue. Another 22% is from sales tax, and that does include our mixed beverage taxes, well, just a slight amount for that. Our franchise taxes, which are the franchise fees on the utilities that operate within the city are about 8%. We are expecting, we have taken into consideration in the plan that there is a calculation correction on our franchise fees, so we are expecting a little bit of additional revenue from that correction in how the franchise fees are calculated and remitted to the state.
But the legislature just decided to take half of our franchise fees away from these communications companies, so do you factor that in?
We have, and we will, but we also get franchise fees from our, from other utilities as well. So natural gas, electricity, and the electricity one is the one that, that has been, that will need to be adjusted.
And you also mentioned in the sales tax, it includes mixed beverage. Does it also include the 4B?
That is actually, that is included, and it's recorded and expended out of a separate fund, so it's not in our general fund.
Generally, you show separately.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Tina?
Yes, ma'am.
Those, I know we've had growth in sales taxes with all the business and growth in property taxes because of the evaluation, or the valuations, but are the percentages pretty much, I have the growth offset each other, or the percentages pretty much the same?
Our.
Like 52% for property and 22% for sales taxes, is that kind of staying close?
It has. It's, it stayed pretty close.
The one's not really growing.
It stayed pretty close. And our non-tax-related revenues are about 18%, and those are things like our, our parks and recreation fees, our other charges for services like building permits and those types of expenditures, also some inter-fund transfers, our intergovernmental, which are grants that we are expecting to continue to receive, make up that difference. And also municipal court fines and fees are there as well. Wanting to take a look and just really look at the components of our property tax revenue, how that's determined. We get our gross appraised values, and we subtract out the exemptions, and those we are expecting to hit, our exemptions are probably going to top about $1 million this coming year. That's the homestead exemptions, as well as disabled persons are.
Billion, billion dollars?
1 million.
A million.
We're expecting our, we're expecting our exemptions to, yes. Homestead exemptions make up about 636 million of that 1 million. The city does still offer the 20% homestead exemption, which is a very good advantage for our residents. So we look at our appraised value, less those exemptions, that gets us to our tax levy, and then to get to what our actual revenue projections would be, we multiply that by our collection rate. And our city collects, about 99% of our property tax revenues are collected each year. And our tax rate does include the two components, which is our debt service rate, which is used to pay principal and interest payments on existing debt, and then also the maintenance and operations, which covers the city's operating, a portion of the city's operating expenditures. Tax rate drivers in our property tax revenue included in the plan, the plan is designed to operate or to provide a projection looking at the effective tax rate. So that is how we build the plan each year. We are able to look at different tax rate scenarios in the plan, but what we are presenting tonight, we're actually, actually going to present two scenarios, one of them being the effective tax rate, the other will look at it at a flat tax rate. So with the effective tax rate, that generates around the same amount of revenue from one year to the next, looking at the properties that are taxed in both years, prior year as well as the current year. So we generate about the same amount of revenue. As mentioned, we have some revenue growth based on revaluations and new construction, and as I mentioned, we also have a scenario that we'll show you looking at the flat tax rate, and we can also in the plan build scenarios for different tax rates if we wanted to include new debt service. And so it does allow us to do something, some changes in different scenarios in the Looking at our key expenditure planning assumptions, we have, our existing personnel makes up around 70% of the city's operational expenses. So we have factored in based on our, based on historical increases for merit. And again, we don't do across-the-board raises, but we do have a merit-based, a merit-based increase of our personnel costs, and so we have about 3% factored into the plan each year for personnel growth and benefits. Our non-personnel expenses are around 2%. We look at a five-year historical, look at that to base that 2% for our non-personnel Our plan also takes into consideration the city's fund balance. We have a, our fiscal policies require or have us to target having a 90-day operating reserve. And so looking at and basing the plan on an effective tax rate, we would be able to maintain our 90-day operating reserve and hit that target over the five-year planning window. Our financial policies also limit what we can use fund balance for, and these are listed, some of the uses are listed there. It has to be one-time in nature. It's got to be either a major capital expenditure or emergencies such as a Hurricane Harvey, or startup expenditures for a brand-new program could be utilized. We don't, haven't had that or haven't had to do that, but that would be one of the uses as well. And we will look at the fund balance projections as we go further in the presentation. This slide shows the effective tax rate or what the revenue and expenditures would look like using the effective tax rate. We would definitely have, or in the projections, it would show that our revenues do slightly outpace our expenditures over the five-year planning window, and so we would have enough to maintain our current services, but we would not be able to add, or we don't project to be able to add any new programs to our existing operations. And we've layered in the first look at the decision packages, and as we go through the budget development process, we'll take a look at those more closely. But the dotted line does reflect what our expenditures would look like if we were to layer in the decision packages that the departments are estimating and projecting to have need And the slide does show that in that slide, I'm sorry, in that slide, our expenditures do include the $500,000 for street maintenance that we have included in our general fund. So that's in addition to what's in the street maintenance sales tax. And also as a reminder, by city charter, we are required to present a balanced budget. So we're never going to present to council a budget where the expenses outpace the revenues. We would, we would make sure that the budget is balanced.
And for the first time in eight years, those two lines never crossed. So thank you.
That's true.
If you hadn't said it, I was going to offer the opportunity for you to say it, since you've said it seven years in a row when they've crossed.
Every year, the sky is falling intersection of these lines five years down the road, which can never happen.
Right. It would never happen.
Thanks.
So as mentioned, our 90-day operating reserve would be maintained during, throughout the five-year planning window. Right now, the plan shows the effective tax rate. It does not include any of those decision packages, because that will be hashed out during our budget development process. The staff has not vetted those decision packages as of yet to present those to council, so we will be looking at that and doing that over the next few weeks in preparation for delivering the proposed budget. As mentioned, we did do a scenario looking at the flat tax rate based on some of the discussions that have happened with the citizens advisory team that is working on or looking at capital projects for potential bond issuance. So we did want to take a look at a flat tax rate and what that would look like. So if we were to project a flat tax rate throughout the five-year window, that gap between the revenues and expenditures widens just slightly. In year one, we'd have almost $300,000, we project, for decision packages or to cover additional debt service or principal and interest payments on debt.
So you're anticipating that if there's a bond, you're anticipating the debt load in that, projecting out for five years?
This does not show that. This, this just shows what our revenue potential would be if we were to hold the tax rate flat.
Okay, so you're not, you're not putting in any possible bond?
This, this does not include that, but we can build the plan with additional debt. We have the ability to do that in the plan.
So, so out, throughout this graph, what we're looking at is increasing revenues over expenses. So if we did have a bond election, looking at this, we could stay at the flat tax rate unless the interest and principal payments were exceeding 300,000 in the first year, 400,000. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So I think it's important that the citizens know that it may be that we don't have to raise their taxes on it if we, if we work this out right.
That's correct.
Okay.
But I would say that historically, there's been important things in those decision packages that we have wanted to spend money on, like increasing the police force or doing things like that. So let's not forget about that sitting out there.
And this doesn't.
And if I may, in years past, we also talked about that the current debt that we have begins to fall off, and so we showed how that debt's falling off if we do decide to incur new debt. So there'll be a chart like that somewhere along the way if we do move forward with the bond election.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may jump in, a lot of that information has been provided to the citizens advisory team in preparation for the work they're going to present to council later this month, and it's also available on our website to see some of those potential scenarios.
And also to add on to what Councilmember Rocky mentioned was that not only the decision packages, but we do have some things that are proposed as forces at work. Some of the departments have identified some potential expenditures and forces at work are things that are either a regulation that we have to implement, or it's a program or that we have existing already that we have to enhance for, it could be regulatory or just by nature of the program. So those things usually get looked at first as we're going through our decision packages and, and those supplemental items, and those we look at funding before any of the decision packages.
Tina, this, if I'm interpreting this right, the first chart you showed us, the first graph is, was the effective tax rate.
Yes, ma'am.
On this budget. This is the flat tax rate, and so it's apples to apples.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not bond, it's not all those decision packages. You're just showing us what revenues and expenditures would look like, effective tax rate, flat tax rate, and I don't know if you have another one.
This is it for this, but that is correct. Yes, ma'am. For now. For now. Okay. As alluded to, we have wanted to mention that the citizens advisory team was formed in early March, and they have been meeting to discuss future capital needs of the city as well as funding sources or potential funding sources for those needs. So we wanted to touch on that in this presentation, and then again, mention that we have the ability in the multi-year financial plan to build on those scenarios if we need to do so, if we're directed to do so. This slide is actually something that was presented or shown, and I believe it was March as well, when we did the kickoff team and looking at the financial health of the city, and it does show what the city's debt capacity would be if we were to consider issuing new debt. And it does show that, how much debt we could issue with no tax rate increase through a 5-cent tax rate increase. So we just wanted to include this in tonight's presentation just as a review.
The forces at work, can I go back just a minute? You're saying that those possible expenditures over the next five years, forces at work that might be regulated on us to spend is not in the flat tax rate or the effective tax rate?
That's correct.
Okay.
That does not show any force at work or decision packages, so it is truly just revenues to current expenses.
Current, okay.
Yes.
Okay. And so if we look out into the future, then we could possibly have not only this, but forces at work.
And any kind of regular sources that incur in the budget?
Yes, sir. And we look at those annually, because they can change from year to year, so.
So for example, a medical insurance with staff is one. We don't have a lot of control on it, it goes up, we got to, we got to deal with it. That's a force at work.
And so we come to council's role in the multi-year financial plan as well as the upcoming budget development process. We will look for your guidance on our, on our tax rate. We also would need your input on any changes to our existing fees, your support of those or, and any alternative revenue sources, if you would like for us to explore those options. We'd seek direction from you on that, any programmatic changes. We would need your guidance and support on any of those things that are recommended or that we, by regulatory agencies that we have to implement, and your participation, active participation in our budget process. We welcome the opportunity to talk with council and get feedback on the budget process. We are in full budget swing right now, so we will be presenting that, and our goal, city charter requires us to deliver the proposed budget by August 1st, so our goal is to have it to you prior to that, so that's what we're working toward.
Since you mentioned it, for my help and anybody listening, could you go over the timing on the citizens advisory group and our, and our role and a bond, all the timing and various meetings and stuff we're going to do?
Sure.
As of right now, the citizens advisory team is set to present counsel their recommendations later this month. You have an agenda item later tonight to call. You have an agenda item later tonight to call for a special meeting later in June, the June 24th. Assuming council's gonna take multiple meetings to vet the information that's presented to them in the form of a recommendation later this year in November, ultimately, council has until August to call for that bond election in November. So, we anticipate with y'all receiving the recommendation in June that you will have at least two more meetings at which you can vet it thoroughly and make a decision on whether or not to, one, hold a bond election, and then two, how that bond election should be structured.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katina. Great job, as usual. Okay, item six, closed executive session. Communications from the public regarding executive session topics. Council may convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussion and action related thereto an open session evaluation of the city attorney. Take a break, break, we'll try to get all this done by 7:00 o'clock and come back. Reconvene into open session, item eight, communication from the public to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. City council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Lisa Cushing.
Oh, no. Yes, ma'am. I'll be very brief. Thank you all for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I'm here about item number 12, the possible renaming of the Stevenson Park gazebo. And I just have a really brief statement. I take no issue in Mayor Schrader being honored with naming of a public building in Friendswood. In fact, I think his service should be recognized and honored. But I would ask that the gazebo remain unnamed if it cannot be named for the person who designed it and worked almost around the clock so it could be completed in time to celebrate our nation's bicentennial celebration in 1976. The gazebo was my father's gift to our community, and the city of Friendswood paid only for the construction materials to build it. Outside the cost of construction materials, my father solely bore the cost of this treasured landmark. I would add that I had a conversation with David Bolton today, who was my father's helper at the time, and he and my father alone built that. So, it wasn't as if my father hired a construction crew to build it. He built it by his own hand with the help of this young man at the time. I'm not sure that my father would have wanted his name on the gazebo because he never sought attention of any kind. But it doesn't, it simply doesn't feel right or it doesn't feel good that anyone else's name would be put on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Connie Raddesso.
I'll be brief. My name's Connie Raddesso. I was a little inspired by the discussion earlier tonight about the budget and the options that are before you. And I do appreciate how Friendswood is conservative, but I would ask that in the planning, that we be more practical so that we don't run into things like Friendswood Link that didn't, that we ran out of money, or Black Hawk, where we've not put enough money into it ahead of time. So, I just hope we plan accordingly with what's coming up and that we can actually cover our bases and get done what needs to be done. Thanks.
Thank you. Item nine, city managers' report. Rod.
Yes, sir. Council, as you well know, our annual 4th of July celebration is coming up on Thursday, the 4th of July. This will be our 124th annual celebration of our country's birth. The theme for this year's celebration is "There's No Place Like Home." As in years past, there'll be a grand parade that starts at 10:00 in the morning at Heritage and South Friendswood Drive and go all the way till it hits Stevenson Park. Roughly at the conclusion of the grand parade, there will be a daytime program that will have vendors, carnival rides, food booths, et cetera, for family, family fun activities throughout the day. We will take a brief break between 3:30 and 7:30 at which our dedicated group of volunteers will quickly move over to Centennial Park to set up for the evening program, which will have similar carnival rides and, and food vendors in preparation for the nighttime festivities. There will be music provided by Molly Ringwald's. They're a cover band that does namely 80's hits and will be performing roughly around 7:30 that night, followed by a firework extravaganza around 9:20. I say around 9:20. It may be a little bit later, it may be a little bit sooner. I can't quite predict that. We do get calls annually as to, hey, it's 9:25, the fireworks have not started. There will be no public parking at Centennial Park, much like years past. There will be free shuttles provided using FISD buses from the Methodist Church on 518 here in Friendswood, as well as the high school. And shuttle services will start roughly around 6:30 and will last throughout the night once the fireworks are over. With regards to our local high schools here in Friendswood, as well as on the CCISD side, Waste Connections has given out their annual scholarship award to three local high school students. These scholarships are in the amount of 500 bucks for the two Clear Springs and Clearbrook High Schools and one $1,000 scholarship on the Friendswood High School. The Friendswood High School student, Sally Ann Rohr, received a scholarship. She will be going to the University of Houston's Honors College and majoring in biology with a minor in medicine. The Clearbrook High School student, Nie Nguyen, will also be going to U of H. So, and I promise I had nothing to do with any of these. Yes. Will also be going to U of H and studying kinesiology. And the Clear Springs High School student, Marcella Adams, will be going to San Jacinto Community College and majoring in education. We appreciate Waste Connections' efforts in helping the youth of this community further their education, and we're grateful for that. Since we are in summer months, the library program is, the library's starting to kick off their summertime reading programs to encourage youth as well as adults to read books. For the kids, not the adults, you can earn prizes and win trips to Sliderman, tickets to the Kima Boardwalk Astros games, season pass to the Space Center Houston, as well as snow cones and with the librarian of your choice, I guess you get to pick, and private sessions with Oculus Rift virtual reality, which if y'all have not seen that, it was a virtual reality game that was provided at the library during the May the 4th event that was quite popular, that had a four-hour wait at one point.
Virtual wait.
Virtual wait, well. It was a long virtual wait, yes. As, since we are in the summer months, it's the time of year where you're starting to get bothered by mosquitoes. It's a reminder for our residents that mosquito control services are provided for by the county. Galveston County provides aerial spraying. Harris County provides spraying once they have a confirmed West Nile case. The city does try to supplement both counties' efforts by spraying public facilities and parks with a truck. If you're interested in asking the county to provide additional spraying, you can contact Harris County Mosquito Control at 713-440-4800 or Galveston County Mosquito Control at 1-800-842-5622. We will have links on our website to the various webpages associated with both counties to see what their schedules are associated with their, their spraying. As council knows, we've been working on our annual streets program and coming to the tail end on the asphalt program. In July of 2018, the city received our pavement management assessment plan that cataloged every street in the city of Friendswood minus those that are owned and operated by the Texas Department of Transportation. They cataloged these streets based on high-tech sonar equipment that evaluated both the surface conditions of the pavement, cracks and blemishes or other features, as well as subgrade integrity. So, if there are areas at which the roadway's starting to fail because of the subgrade being inadequate, this equipment identified errors or potential pitfalls in that, in that roadway. The report recommended a prioritized five-year program to tackle the streets throughout the city so that we can knock out the most deficient streets over a five-year period. Not knock out every street in Friendswood over five years, but those that ranked on the bottom half of our inventory. The intent there was to address the worst streets first so that they don't become a longer, more, more costly liability moving forward. Earlier this year, council awarded an asphalt contract to Angel Brothers in which East Viejo Drive, East Spreading Oaks, West Spreading Oaks, Moore Road, Falling Leaf, East Winding Way, West Winding Way, and Wilderness Trails were completed. I will say on Spreading Oaks, as well as a few other locations, we did have some deficiency with the contractors' work, and we're working with the contractor to go back and redo that, that work and make those issues right. Later this, this summer, in, in the July timeframe, we plan on going out for bids for the concrete component of the same street program. The asphalt, we spent about $1.8 million. We intend to spend about 1.5 to 1.6 on the concrete streets. All of these projects are being funded by our street sales tax, so it's not general fund property tax dollars that are going into this. This is the sales tax measure that was approved by voters in May of 2016. With regard to our recent legislative session for the state of Texas, as you know, the session recently closed. There were a number of bills that passed and then others that have been sent to the governor that have yet to be finalized. There are some that genuinely impact the city of Friendswood. As an example, the, the state's licensure laws as it relates to licensing plumbers and certifying that they're competent to provide the services that they are providing, took, their sunset clause had no action, so that licensure requirements has since gone away. So, staff is working to talk with the legislature about having a special session to take up that issue so that we don't have an issue with unqualified plumbers or come up with another solution. House Bill 852, as it pertains to the city's ability to issue building permit fees based upon, based off of construction valuations, has passed and it's effective immediately. So, the city bases permit fees currently off of construction valuations based on the value of the project. We anticipate it'll cost this much in plan review and building inspection, so on and so forth. The state has now deemed that we can no longer base it off construction valuation, so staff is working with Mary Kay as well as other agencies to find a more equitable way to determine what the fee structure is. That bill is effective immediately. House Bill 2439 is on your agenda later on tonight under resolutions. This prohibits cities from regulating aesthetic finishes of building facades, so dictating a brick or masonry product on the exterior buildings would be prohibited. This bill, though it passed the House and the Senate, it did not get signed yet by the, the governor. There is a resolution on tonight's agenda requesting that the governor veto that, that bill. We mentioned earlier tonight during the multi-year financial plan, revenues, fees being impacted with regard to telecommunications or facilities that are located within the city's right-of-way. Senate Bill 1152 has, has passed and is currently enrolled. It hasn't been signed or approved by the governor, but should it move forward, would significantly impact our franchise fee revenue that we see on an annual basis. If you recall from the slides earlier tonight, that was a considerable amount of money that would impact our, our funding to the tune of several hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars, three to $500,000. On Hurricane Harvey, I know for the last several months, I've sounded like a broken record. I am, I am hopeful, earlier today, I received a call from Congressman Weber's office. It's in regard to a letter and a conference call that the mayor and, and staff had with Congressman Weber and Congressman Olson's office. We anticipate receiving positive information from them on their buyout applications within the next two weeks, which is very hopeful. On the elevation applications, it's not looking promising, but we'll continue to push. They're also helping us with regard to the city projects on the FEMA's books that have yet to be acted on. We're hopeful that we can get some resolution to them this summer. So, that's it for my report.
Not to put you on the spot, Rod, but Black Hawk was specifically brought up. Do you have a, can you say a couple of words about our plan for finishing Black Hawk?
Yes. We have Black Hawk currently under construction from roughly Friendswood Link Road to Eden Vale, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. That is a full four-lane reconstruction. So, two lanes are under construction right now. We will shortly switch to the opposite side of the road and do the complement two lanes as well, in addition to upgrades to some of the storm sewer facilities and water lines that are out there. The plan currently has slated the remaining sections of Black Hawk to be tackled in years four and five of our, our prioritized list. Obviously, if funding streams in terms of sales tax come in higher, we can tackle certain projects sooner as opposed to later. Based on the assessment that we had from the high-tech equipment, it wasn't worse than the streets that we're looking to tackle right now.
We're in year three right now?
We're in year, we're about to kick off year two. So, we're in year three of the collection. We're in year two of the, the, doing the streets projects. And why, why we're only in year two is because we just got the report in July of 2018. But we're in year three of collections, yes.
Thank you.
Not to jinx anything, but there is a storm in the Gulf. Are we doing any planning?
Yes. So, each of the departments have been briefed on the projected forecast that is out there, and they're taking the necessary steps to prepare their facilities and their, their crews appropriately.
Okay, item 10, communication from committees and special reports. A library board annual report given by Vice Chair Diane Freeman. Well.
My mistake, not the mayor's.
Chairman Diane Freeman. But the next item is, we're gonna reappoint you, so.
Yes, yes.
Be careful.
It's very difficult.
Same.
Should I read this now?
Please do.
All right. Well, I was gonna say, "Good evening, and I am pleased to report great news from the library." The library's door count reflects that we had 186,169 patrons visiting the library, which is an increase over 3% from the previous fiscal year. This accounts for about 630 daily visitors. Additionally, the library issued 2,747 new library cards. The total number of items checked out for the year was 348,554 items. This was an increase of about 3%. In order to stay current, the library added over 5,000 new items. During this time, the library raised over $5,000 from the sale of purged library cards and donated items. Patrons are always encouraged to donate their used books so that we can sell them at the book sales. This past year, the library hosted 872 programs with attendance exceeding 33,000 people. Our expanded meeting and study rooms were scheduled for use 3,564 times by the library patrons. The patrons used the library public internet stations over 122,000 times, and the library personnel responded to over 43,000 reference questions. For the fifth consecutive year, the Friendswood Library qualified for the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of a Library Excellence Award by demonstrating excellence in 10 service categories. Most recently, the library hosted, and you've heard about it already, the May 4th, be with you, the Star Wars Celebration, where over 600 people, oh, you must be, yes.
They cropped the picture, unfortunately. You can't tell, but Darth Vader's hands are arm out my neck.
I wonder who that was. Over at 600 people attended the library for movies, character photo ops, the virtual reality that you were talking about, the Oculus Rift system, and snacks from our Star Wars cantina. Thanks to many who made this a success, and a special thanks to Steve Rocky, who is our council liaison, who was also a volunteer worker. Thank you. This year, I would like to offer a very special thank you to the friends of- This year, I would like to offer a very special thank you to the friends of the library for their support in providing funds for additional programs and activities such as summer reading programs, sponsoring staff, attendance to the Texas Library Association Conference, purchasing gift giveaways during National Library Week, as well as providing personnel for supporting the book sales and the book nooks. Starting, since starting this past October, the adult and children book nooks have been providing donated books for sale on a daily, ongoing basis. Now I want to talk about who are on the executive board. Madeline Short is the president. Chester Carrick is vice president. Randy Wyble is treasurer, and I happen to be in charge of the book sale and the book nooks. Next, we have the recognition of congratulations. Need to go out to the library staff with changes and new personnel and promotions. Matthew Riley was promoted to library director, and he, in August, will be celebrating 30 years with the library. Karen Hart was promoted to assistant library director. Lisa Wilkins was promoted to administrative assistant, and she will be receiving her master's degree in library science in July. Kim Zubrick was promoted to supervisor of the reference and adult services. Richard Haley was promoted as, or to, library assistant, I know, associate. Richard recently graduated with a degree in communications. Drew Watkins recently joined the library's reference staff and holds a master's degree in humanities. And in conclusion, I've been told that if you are not part of the future, you are the past. Our library is a big part of Friendswood's future by what it now offers to the community, such as the use of a 3D printer, the virtual reality system we've been talking about, a poster printer, green screen technology, a new listening station for playing your choice of vinyl records, yes, vinyl records, CDs, and audiobooks, thousands of downloadable eBooks, audiobooks, and magazines, and streaming videos, and much more. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Madam Chairwoman. I'm sorry I demoted you earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just, it was just at the last meeting, and Mike Zarowitz, who had been the chair, he elected to step down as a chair, but he's still on the, he's still on the team, and Diane was kind enough to take over, so.
Great. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item 11, discussion of possible action regarding appointments and reappointments to the following committees, boards, and commissions. I'm going to read all three of these here and handle this as one item, if you don't mind. Keep Friendswood Beautiful. Appoint Diana Lanell Hall to replace Thomas Goodwin, who resigned with a term expiring November 2021. Library Board, reappoint members Diane Freeman, Brian Corey, and Nita Jambrecar to three-year terms expiring July 2022. Reappoint alternate members Joe Beth Brizendine, Renette Rowley, and Madeline Short to three-year terms expiring July 2022. Planning and Zoning Commission, reappoint members Joe Matranga, Richard Clark, and Marcus Perry to three-year terms expiring July 2022.
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Item 12, discussion of possible action regarding naming city facilities. Stevenson Park gazebo. I'm going to take no action on that item tonight. Moving on. Item 13, discussion of possible action regarding approving revisions to the social media policy. Mary Kay?
This item is before.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay, if you'd like.
This item is before you because the city charter provides that the city manager shall prepare personnel policies, and the city council shall adopt those policies with or without amendment. The latest policy was from 2016. It applies, this policy updates that one. It applies to third-party websites such as Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, and whatever else is out there. Right now, the media, the city has a number of city media sites, and the department has to submit, in order to comply with this policy, the department has to submit approval to the city manager within 30 days of adoption of this policy. And each department director designates an administrator, and they're responsible for making sure that this policy is followed, keeping all the sites updated, current, and make sure they comply with the policy. This does not impair a person to have a private, a city employee to have a private, personal account. The only thing that we require is that they don't act as if they're acting upon, or acting for the city. It's totally personal, and they cannot use the city's website, the city's computer systems. If they do that, they lose their protection. So basically, this updates the policy. It will provide the city to post certain information on the website advising the public of the content of the specific post, and it advises the public that if they do certain things, such as, you know, obscene language, false information, there's a list of things that will be published on the website that let the public know what they can't do. So this basically updates our policy, and it's probably going to be updated, you know, year after year.
Thank you. Steve?
So council members are exempt from this, right?
This, well.
Well, let me give the follow-up. And if we are, shouldn't we have a policy for council members?
This does not apply to city council members, and yes, it would be a good idea because in this policy, commissions and committees are addressed, and they are advised not to comment on Facebook posts because it could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and that same would apply to city council members, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Go ahead, Councilmember Hanks, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to clean up something when we came out of executive session. I'd like to make a motion that we extend the city manager's contract through June.
City attorney.
City attorney's contract, thank you, through June 2022 with a 3.5% increase in salary.
That was the motion.
It was botched a little, but it was.
Robert, second it.
Robert, you can second it.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good to have you, Mary Kay. There's Keller, city attorney. Lucky to have you.
Tell him you took his spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll get it in writing.
Okay, item 14, resolutions. Resolution 2019-17, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas approving an amendment to section 3.1, terms of the bylaws of the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation, and repealing all other resolutions inconsistent or in conflict therewith.
Second.
A motion is second. Did I see Dr. McGinnis walk in?
He is.
Got a member from the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation here. Are you the secretary, treasurer? Are you the vice?
Vice President.
The vice chair, I'm sorry. Doctor, vice chair is here.
Mayor, for benefit of council, when we first started, when the 4B sales tax passed and the corporation started, originally each of the seven members were appointed to two-year terms. Unfortunately, unlike any committee or commission that the city's affiliated with, we don't want a situation where the entire committee is replaced at one given time. After we've gotten a few years under the belt, the request was made to stagger terms so that there wouldn't be a mass exodus of institutional knowledge. The FDEDC board has adopted both of the, this resolution and the next one, which you have later on, and are in agreement with it.
Okay. Steve?
And I read that you, you know, you picked numbers, and it was even odd. Just to help me, which positions are up when?
Backup material, let me open it up real quick.
The terms, all of the terms expire July 2022, 20, 2020, next year. So we'll, the bylaws, y'all are the final authority on the articles of amendment to the articles of formation or certificate of formation. After y'all vote, and if you approve that, it'll go to the Secretary of State. They told me they should get back with us about a week after they receive it. Once they approve the changes, then the board will put on their agenda the drawing of the positions, and the odd-numbered four members would get a two-year term, and the three even-numbered positions would get a one-year term. And then subsequent to that, at the next appointment date, everyone, all positions would get a two-year term, so they'll be staggered from that point forward.
Okay. Got a motion in a second on this resolution. All in favor? Okay, resolution 2019-18, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, finding and determining that the proposed certificate, excuse me, certificate of amendment to the certificate of formation is advisable, approving the form of the proposed amendment to Article 8 regarding the terms of the directors authorizing the adoption of the amendment, authorizing the board of directors of the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation to file the certificate of amendment with the Texas Secretary of State's office, repealing all other resolutions inconsistent or in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. A motion is second. All in favor? Thanks for your service, Pat. Resolution 2019-19, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties endorsing the appointment of two new members to the Galveston County United Board of Health. Got a motion in a second. All in favor? Resolution 2019-20, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, requesting Governor Abbott to veto House Bill 2439.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. This is the one that Rod already talked about. Steve?
I guess our concern about this is that it would, it would obviate our rules that we've put in for the downtown districts. Is that right?
Not just for downtown, but throughout the city. We have community overlay districts that have been adopted that require certain building materials be adhered to, so.
That'd be across the city, but in specific for the downtown district. Question I have, because there's an exemption for Main Street programs. Would we, would we be exempt because of that for the downtown district?
We would not. We don't, we're not an official Main Street designation.
What does it take to get that?
I, yeah, we would have to, you get up to the.
It's actually pretty complicated.
Yes, I'm asking.
Yeah, we've asked about this before.
For it to be a Main Street program, you have to have a Main Street coordinator on staff. That's one of the first requirements.
No. In addition to designating historical structures and so on and so forth, it's, it's possible if that's a desire of the city council, but it does come at a cost.
Is it a full-time position?
Yes.
Doesn't seem like it, but.
I have an issue with just, I mean, I'm all about downtown, no doubt, but I think it's being very short-sighted to only be concerned about our downtown. I mean, throughout our entire city, we would lose the say-so about what types of materials are being used, facade, all the rest of it, and we care about all of Friendswood and all of our commercial development. So I'm very happy to see this on our agenda, and I'm very happy to urge the governor to veto this because I think we all care what our city looks like, and this would really take that away from us. So you could have, I don't know, cardboard box painted purple on Friendswood, you know, 528 or whatever, and that just would not be, I don't think anybody wants that.
Steve?
Yeah, I support that we give this resolution to have it vetoed, and I'm actually disappointed that our two representative and our state senator voted for this. This is a huge overreach by the state. They're basically saying that representatives in Lampasus or El Paso or whatever know more about Friendswood than we know about Friendswood. And, and this is, you know, they're, they're attempting to legislate something that we do an excellent job of, and so we don't, we don't need this bill.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All in favor? Ordinances. Ordinance number T 2019-16, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.N.1 geographic limits to amend the established boundary of the downtown district map.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Steve?
Yeah, when we voted on this last time, and I think it was a timing issue, the Planning and Zoning Commission had, had a split vote, okay? And I just think in all fairness, I don't think we really heard what their differences were. So, so could you kind of give us a little more detail about why? I mean, it was four to three, it was close, I understand that, but just what the.
One, yeah, one to five. So the primary reasons for voting in favor of the change, and this was to change the boundary of the downtown district, was to develop the property under one zoning district that would be more beneficial to the landowner, and then not, it's not an administrative burden to the city for tracking purposes for sales tax and benefits to the property. Primary reasons for opposing was not in favor of changing the rules for one landowner when other equivalent development options were available, and the boundary has been in place since 2008 with no material issues to date.
Thank you. Other questions? All in favor? Ordinance T 2019-17, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.F off-street parking and loading regulations to relocate downtown district-related language to Section 8.N.3 parking, and amendments to reduce the head-in parking distance requirement from 400 feet to 75 feet, including minor grammatical corrections.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Ordinance T 2019-18, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 7.I, and Section 8.N.4 to allow cement fiber board installed as lap siding in the downtown district. Section 8.N.4 to change the administration requirements in the downtown district, and Section 8.N.4 to restate that service laterals must be installed underground. Thank you. Prohibit garage bay doors from fronting FM 518 in certain situations. Limit exterior building colors to earth tone colors. Require that screening materials match the main structure, and add a reference to dumpster screening requirements, including minor grammatical corrections.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Ordinance T 2019-19, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.N.8, adjacent property buffer maintenance and installation, duplicating requirements for buffering from Section I.2 perimeter landscaping, and amendments to Section 8.N.3 parking, duplicating requirements for parking from Section I.2.C off-street parking landscaping, and relocating language PUD modification from Section 8.H modification of standard proposed within a PUD to Section 7.J.PUD planned unit development, general purpose and description, including minor grammatical corrections.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? About to just say, all in favor of the rest of this entire agenda? Okay. Ordinance T 2019-20, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A signs, Section 9 prohibited signs to prohibit LED and similar storefront lights in the downtown district boundary.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Okay, ordinance number T 2019-23, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment eight to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year 2018-2019. Motion is second. All in favor? Communications from the public. Communications from mayor and councilmembers. Thanks, Mayor Proctor. Steve Rocky, you want to start?
Just, and some of you, some other people are working on here, say, it's going to be a fabulous.
Just, and some other people are working on this, so it's going to be a fabulous celebration, celebrating the entire week of the 50th anniversary of the Apollo 11. It'll be in the week... what's the dates?
First event is the Fourth of July parade, and then the first...
They're starting the Fourth of July, and we have things going on throughout the whole week, all the way through the actual splashdown date. There's a whole bunch of events, events for kids, events for adults. There's going to be speaking things with astronauts and astronauts' wives, flight controllers, all sorts of stuff going on. So this is an early thing. Keep an eye out for it. But, and there's a committee working on it, and if anybody is interested in working on the committee, just show up. We can let you know when they're going to be. But I will tell you, if you show up, you may end up assigned to be something, like the treasurer, like I was. So, but anyway, keep it on your calendars. It's gonna be a really exciting event.
I just want to mention that we have a beautiful new garden area in Stevenson Park, the Pollinator Garden. If you have not been out there, you need to go see, and the dedication is going to occur this Friday at 6:30. I'm looking at James or Michael. Anyway, 6:30 this Friday. I'm assuming right before Concert in the Park starts. So I think that timing was on purpose. But if you've not been over there, please go take a look. It is absolutely beautiful, so.
And I wanted to say that Sally and the mayor and I attended a TML leadership conference a week and a half ago, met some great people across the state, learned a lot about our own leadership styles, and it was really a very good, very quality, high-quality conference, and I appreciate being able to go. Attended three committee meetings over the past month. There sure are lots of volunteers in this city, and we have a great heritage of citizens stepping up to serve, and thank you, everyone.
I just want to mention what a wonderful report we had this evening on the library. Over 186,000 people visited our library downtown, 630 people a day. What foresight our predecessors had who came up with that building and came up with the funds to build it. Just imagine what a community civic center could do for our downtown, too. I'm just saying, guys, that's just what our predecessors did. They stepped up, and they built a beautiful library, and they have 186,000 people visiting our downtown. I'm just saying, what a wonderful report.
Councilmember Aaron Wurt.
I just want to say thanks again. The last month, I've been really embraced by city staff, Mo, for introducing me, everybody. I'm still going through some orientation. The council's been outstanding on getting me acquainted. For some of y'all didn't see, the Memorial Day ceremony, it was fantastic. We should all be very thankful to live in a city that... it really pays that kind of tribute to the people we have in this community that served and lost their lives for our freedom. If y'all didn't see, the Cake Wars that... I know, I don't know, Steve, did you happen to get by there? The Cake Wars at the high school was fantastic that the culinary department puts on. That was a neat event. They're doing a lot of neat things over at that facility. And, you know, being the new guy, just, I want to continue to meet all of y'all. If you reach out to me, I'd, you know, say hi, I won't bite you or anything. I'd like to, you know, get to HOA meetings, meet some of y'all, and reach out to me anytime, and I look forward to serving this community with these wonderful people up here, and thanks again.
Yeah, like Brent said, there's a lot going on in the city, you know? The more I look around, the more... well, frankly, the more things I get invited to, the more things I find out about. You know, we had culture and cuisine last weekend, where we went out to Evelyn Newman Amphitheater and were fed and entertained by ballet and the high school symphonic band, and just tremendous things going on. I don't even know about this Cake Wars thing, so I guess I'm not on everybody's... Jim was there, my son was there. Yeah. Yeah. He didn't bring me any cake. Yeah, okay. 124th, July 4th celebration here in Friendswood. What does that mean for next year? 125. 124, 125. Maybe you're not good at math, Sally. So 125th year next year, so we're gonna have to start planning now, not just for the Fourth of July, but the entire year. You already thinking about that, JT? What, you got the logo made yet, you know? With like our Friendswood logo with like a big 125 or something? It's gonna be pretty cool, 125th year. That's awesome. Apollo, I'm excited that we are pulling these Apollo 11 commemoration events together to celebrate 50 years since that mission. Just to give you a little side story, last fall, and you know, I did some research, and currently at NASA over there at Johnson Space Center, we have 58 active U.S. astronauts. You know, 15 of them live in Friendswood. 15 out of 58, over 25%. 16 actually live here if you count the Canadian, but, you know, we don't count him. I don't think he owns the house. I think he's just renting it, hopefully. Anyway, so Kate Rubens, who does live here, owns a house here, last fall said, "Mike, are we gonna celebrate Apollo 11 in Friendswood?" And I said, "Kate, if you help with the committee, I will help you." And she said, "Okay, I'll even chair the committee." The second meeting we had, she said, "NASA's sending me to Russia for a year. I'm out." So Sally and Steve and, you know, the rest of us are all looking at each other now. Okay, I guess we're gonna do this. But anyway, it's gonna be terrific because Sally and Steve are involved, and it's gonna be a tremendous series of events I'm looking forward to. Thank you, Matt Riley, for hosting some of those things at the library. It's gonna be terrific. I think that's all I was gonna say. So, Consent Agenda, item 17.
Honorable mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the consent agenda this evening, so I will see y'all in a minute.
All right. Okay, item 17, Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Let me go get Robert.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.